There's a fund balance, there's no interest.
Yeah, if we have money in the bank.
And you're optimistic that Idells is gonna come up with some money very soon?
I hope so.
Cause you submitted it.
I sent it in awhile ago, so.
Okay.
I think we need to check with them again.
Does that make sense to the landowners?
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept this reclassification, approve and accept.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
We'll never see an Idells two X D M getting anything done.
I'm not sure who's here. Yeah, he's dropping off the bid over in West End this morning and then he was supposed to be here.
If that's impossible, we're acting on the centering of the completion of the project.
Well, I think we better.
We'll have to wait.
We're gonna wait seven minutes, eight minutes, whatever he was gonna be here.
Is there anything else in drains we need to talk about?
Um, yes.
I have a question for you, Rick, and I know this is like chasing our tail. On the, where we went across underneath the highway. Is there any way that we could, uh, I was just wondering how far that goes over on towards Harland's? If there's any way that a person could get another contract type person and go from the highway over, you know, because that elevation is set going into the highway, right?
Yes.
So, we could technically this spring get someone to go that route and then bring this one towards that? You know what I'm saying?
Well, we're.
But I don't, I know we can't drain, there's nothing to drain once we hook that up over there except if we got a bunch of rain after. How far did it go on the east side of the highway at one sixty-nine?
Um, it goes a little to the northeast to the existing tile line and hooks in the existing tile line. I think if you did put in, then the tile line's gonna hurt.
That's what I'm saying, but I was just trying to figure out if we had another group or another guy, if they had another con- person to go over there and hook that up, then we would at least.
What are you after with that? Because you're talking about the.
I'm just trying to speed the damn thing up.
Oh, I, that would all fill that, but you're talking about the, the, the tiles under the road, they got that.
Yeah, the ones under the road, so you could make theoretically, you could hook from the east side of highway one sixty-nine and that's gonna come back, you know?
To that.
To that.
That's where it goes.
That's what I'm saying, and if we could do that over there, but if we had water and that tile coming towards that, you'd, it wouldn't have any place to drain it, it'd sit right there at the highway.
Right, right.
I'm just trying to get from where we're sitting over here in the field to where we end up over here, if we could speed this up by bringing this, this way, cause that elevation is already set coming under the road, we know we could do that. Yeah, it's a given, cause it's already in there.
Yeah, and we checked in this.
It's hard, it, it, without any outlet for that water, it'd be hard to label.
I understand that, that, that was my thing, that was.
Right.
But if they were both working at the same time, hopefully they'd join, I guess.
I bet this is Dave here.
Yeah. Good, okay, but just getting, just gonna start in the discussion now, okay? We, so ten, cause that's how it is on the agenda, and, uh, yeah.
Well, my thought on Bruce's comment was, I like the expediency of course, but if you, basically you're talking about finishing it from the highway to where it ends, wherever that is, which you know.
Yeah.
But like Rick said, there's, if you hook that up, there's nothing to the east, or excuse me, to the west of it, so I don't know if that would.
Well, I know that, I'm just trying to figure out however we did it, if we could do that going from the road to where it ends, the other guys coming this way, at least it would, you don't have that whole lull in the, because right now we're just sitting here like this.
Right.
When I was in my drive yesterday, they're over, uh, on the quarry, I don't know if you drove by the quarry in Gilmore.
Not lately.
Well, they're mining over there, like they're looking for rock in dire need, cause they're digging and on a Sunday, um, they're down there tearing that topsoil off and they're still digging.
They're digging tile western poohs right now, too.
So, anyway.
They're doing a big manning over there.
No, I appreciate, appreciate the expediency factor, I just don't know where we'd go with it if you, if you.
Yeah, you'd have to just lay it in over to it and not hook up that old one yet. You'd have to use its existing outlet to make it work.
Yeah, no, Harland says no, go there.
No.
Just go, go to seed corn, you're not wanna mess with that. Oh, good point, okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm still not convinced that if we have a nice spring that we've pulled the plug on it and we're gonna sit there all through the growing season, but that's your guys' choice, so. Anyway, let's move forward.
Uh, the proposal's out there, I'm not sure who actually came up with it or whatever, it's been part of a little bit of discussion now of looking at, waiting to finish this project in the fall after the seed corn is out. I know Todd has some legitimate concerns on what the trench will be like if they keep going on it at this point. We all want it to just be a successful, well-done project, um, and the, the item on the agenda today is to talk about, completion schedule and how to handle it, so. Dave King is here from King Construction, I've talked to him a couple of times about it in general, several times about the project itself, and, uh, yeah, that's, oh, for quality of construction, the best thing we can do is wait till fall. There's, I don't know how much, have you seen how much rock they're digging on the tile projects?
Did you see them out in the field swimming dirt, went by there the other day and laid some concrete pipe and so on. I've heard it's over two feet, but I, I don't know. That's fair.
Okay, okay. Do you wanna take a lead on this, Beans?
Well, Beans, thanks for coming, Dave. What's your take on this whole deal? Yeah, we've heard this here within the last couple of weeks of this, you know, because of the quality concern and some other things like the fact that it's seed corn and so on and so forth, and the uncertainty between now and, you know, planting season.
Yeah.
Of putting this off and starting, per our discussion a week ago, probably September, month of September timeframe, start up again.
Yeah, but the advantage that if it is seed corn.
It comes off, that's why it's September and not November.
Yeah, it was off quick, remodel corn.
And the other thing, I'll just throw this all out, kinda lump some. You had a extension of a completion date of December first, so obviously it's not completed and it's way past December first. So, you're gracious enough to come, we'd like to hear your take on, you know, the fact it didn't get done or even close to completion, and then your thought where you see this stop, start up again.
Yeah, well, first, you know, I go, I mean, not all tile main projects are created equally unfortunately, and this one is about as ugly as it gets, you know, with the ground conditions, so, um, you know, we were gearing back up to go in here, a week or two ago, I forget.
Can remember tough.
Right, I think we're just kind of, in fact, we're moving to equip it back in, that we had done some maintenance on stuff, so, we're gonna go back in on it, I guess to me, to wait till the fall, listen, the ground conditions aren't gonna get worse. So, it's kinda one of those deals that, you know, we talked to the phone, pardon me, I'd like to just get it done, I mean, we're losing our tail on it, every day we're there, it's red, you know? But same time, like I said, if the conditions can't get worse, I'm not gonna, if the, you know, if the guy farming it, you know, I'm not gonna complain if, you know, if we go in September and give it a try, hopefully the water table be down a little bit, and, um, it's just, you know, we've got a lot of these, we put a lot of pipe in a lot of funky spots, but this is, you know, as tough as it gets without having to go in and actually do, you know, serious de-watering, you know, it's, it's one of those. So, um, I don't know, um, you know, there's some pipe to get moved, we talked a little bit about that, I don't remember who I talked to, landowner?
I don't, we didn't talk to me.
Oh, okay, that was you, that's right, okay, yeah, good to meet you.
Yeah, same here.
So, I mean, we can get that stuff moved out of the way, I don't think that'd be an issue, as far as, you know, in the fall coming in, uh, you know, as soon as the corn's off, you know, be happy to do that, you know, I go, that it may not be the next day or the next week we get right in there, you know, as quickly as, you know, we can finish up what we're doing with, but also with that in mind that that's, you know, roughly when that's gonna happen, so, we can do that, so.
Well, they're pretty good about knowing, once you plant it, the seed corn, they, if they get their heat units, that they can, I mean, it's damn near down to the hour that they know that they're gonna start come or picking it on such and such a date, and those trucks aren't far behind when the, they're.
Especially now when they spray it to kill it.
Right.
How far ahead would you know they're coming in?
Oh, I think we'd have an idea as soon as we get it planted.
Yeah, I mean, they know.
We'd have a lot better idea once, in August, well, they'll be able to pin it down.
That's what I was looking for, is time enough to coordinate it so they can get it right away.
When they get done detasseling, they got pretty good idea when they're gonna pick it, I'd say within two weeks.
Yep.
They have their heat units, what, what it has to reach, and when they get to that point, and then they just, they're, it's set on, basically on the chart, and that's, that's the good thing, that's the thing that scares me is with, you know, middle of August, they know approximately, then we're gonna have to have this date set and that, and I know in the construction company, you aren't gonna be able to say, well, I got two machines sitting here, uh, we're just waiting to come.
We can lose, it's nice that, you know, we've got three crews, so I mean, we can get, you know, we can, if we pencil that in, we could.
Yeah, cause you know it's gonna be.
Right, yeah, we'll know it'll be, here's this window, I'm gonna have to, you know, now, of course, if it goes like last year did and it rains all day, every day, you know, I guess it might change things, but nah, it'd be fine, you know.
Even starting that late, you think you could get it done though before the fall is over?
Yeah, well, one thing, well.
We can add the shorter pipe and less depth.
That's, yeah, and once, we got another twelve hundred, seventeen hundred feet of this, and then it does get a lot better. I hope it gets a lot better, it has to get a lot better, you know, it, so, yeah, yeah, I do think, I don't remember how many days we've got on it left, I guess, but, I sure don't see how if you started in September, there's no way you're not done with normal conditions, you know?
Oh, there's about fifty-eight hundred feet left, and then about fourteen hundred feet to just drop down to thirty inch, and from there on, it's seven feet left.
Reborn?
So, it should go.
Yeah, it's really different than it has been.
I would think twenty-two days.
They believe so, right?
Probably.
Trish, is that bored?
Yes.
Gravel road, or is that cut?
So, that's terrible.
Rick, is that bored or cut across the gravel?
It's cut, it's.
Cut, yeah, open cut, so they can just keep right on going, just notify them and, yeah, so.
Due to this, our completion date was December first, and you had a two hundred and fifty dollar a day penalty for calendar days. I had a conversation with Mr. Hopper here this week about it. I do think we need to enforce that penalty, um, because that's a fair penalty, when people bid jobs, they look at that. And if you don't enforce penalties, people will just be bidding jobs, they don't, they have no intentions of finishing. And to keep the bids honest, I think we need to do this. And visiting with Rick, he didn't think it was quite fair to enforce it till today, which would be the time that we would change the contract. He was thinking typical freeze-up, you know, it froze pretty hard back in mid, mid-January, I suppose, end of Janu- January when it got hard.
When it really did freeze.
When the frost went in. So, I'm willing to move, move that date to mid-January sometime when it did freeze hard, you could no longer probably work decent out there. I don't know what the rest of the board's feelings are on this, or your feelings on it.
Well, first thing I'd say where you have trouble there is like, is the language you use is penalty, you know, that is specifically, you know, against state law, you know, has to show, there's, it's called liquidated damages, you have to prove damages, you know, so, that's where it gets a little sticky on this stuff, and then of course you go, you know, we're in the fourth wettest year on history, so, you know, you start throwing that in there, um, wanna move this thing around, you know, it's just, it gets pretty sticky and, you know, just, like I said, it's a, it's a damages situation, it's not a penalty situation, and I understand where you're coming from as far as other contract, you know, I get that, but that's not how the law and how the contracts work, you know, it's, there has to be damages, you know, shown, so. And I guess I would say, the first thing I would say to that is, you know, these conditions are as bad as they get for tile main construction. Absolutely unforeseen, and I have not asked for a penny more and don't plan to for compensation for that, where if it was maybe, you know, a different scenario and I wasn't pushing your guys, when it comes to the, to the completion of this thing, you know, um, I would definitely, in normal situations, be looking for some extra compensation for changing conditions, cause there's, you know, there's no way when anyone bid this thing that they were gonna see the hydraulic situations that we had and, you know, things of that nature, so. You know, and you get, once you get to that, you know, it starts getting really hairy, but like I said, I would just kinda, we've been just trying to bolt through the thing, at our whopping, you know, eighty to a hundred and twenty feet a day of production, which I can guarantee you is a lot less than what anyone figured when they were estimating this thing, so. I would hope that the, you know, supervisors kinda understand that, you know, every day we show up, we know we're writing the check to come to work, and, uh, I think you're gonna get a real, in the end, what you've spent on is gonna be real fair, and at the same time, you're gonna get, you know, the quality that you would for a higher price, you know, so, or at least I should say, the quality you expect per the contract, that, you know, say more than half of me corrects.
My question is, you said you have three crews, what's the chance, how many crews you had out here? Has it just been the one?
Um, kinda two, we started with Taylor's crew and then we switched it to, uh, to Slim's crew there.
So, what would our chances be that we would kind of have more than two in September?
Well, you know, when we looked at that too, actually, when we were starting back up here a week and a half ago, or try, you know, we were entertaining that, moving equipment in, there's just kinda no way to do it, you know, there's no branches, it's all just main, there's no branches to take off and go, okay, let's get to this branch and that crew can go over that, you know, there's just, there's no way to really do it. We could maybe where the bore is, we could go north of the bore, but it's only a few hundred feet, you know, so then if you tie into stuff, where is it gonna go? You know, it just, we really, we did really look into that, there's just, there's just no way of doing it.
Well, that's, that was my theory, of course, I drive trucks, so I sit and drive by the damn thing all day, every day, and I look at it, and I think, well, maybe if we went out this direction, we, but, and then it gets back to the highway, and pretty sure the state wouldn't want us having water up against their road if we had a three or four inch rain trying to drain that water to it, but.
Yeah, there's just, there's just no good way of doing it, you know, we've done that on projects where there's some branches that come off the main, you know, we have, but.
Yeah, it is, it's all one stretch, basically. Yeah, he's absolutely right, if he came off from the site, that was a separate branch, he could have done that, but, and the, the amount of work east of the road, that's one thing that came to mind as we were talking here, well, maybe a second crew could come in and do that, but it's probably two to three days work.
Yeah, it's just not worth, it's not worth the, you know, because you're tying in and you're hitting other lines, you got water coming in, nowhere for it to go, then you go to try to connect it, it's a, you know, it's just a mess.
I think the farmers are probably pretty much in agreement, they wanting to delay till the fall, is that the consensus we're getting from them?
I think it'd be best and the safest thing to do, yeah, there's just too many people out there.
With detasseling crews and whatnot, I don't think you have any, I mean, you're doing it safely.
Well, that ground is gonna be awful soft, and the people are gonna be getting stuck and falling, you're trying to walk in this.
So, we have to back out and re-stake it?
There's, there is gonna be added cost to this project because of the delays, so we are planning on withholding money of the damages that we are seeing, we're gonna have interest costs, time on her behalf, time on his behalf. You pulled off the project for I don't know how many days in the fall, just up and left.
Three weeks.
When we had beautiful weather, you could have been working.
I don't know if I totally agree with that.
Well, you broke, you had your machine broke for awhile.
Well, that was a, yeah, that, that one, yes, and that's.
And also, yeah, they, he told us he went to a different place to finish a city sewer project, that's why they weren't here.
Yeah, the machine broke down, the, no, that was, or the thirty-some days that they were gone right.
And also, we had another crew putting in a main, just as big, probably longer, they started it later date and completed it the first part of January. And so the working conditions they had are, I'm sure are very similar, it's only three miles away or four, uh, so you can't say the weather is that much worse.
Well, what happens two feet below and lower is what makes the difference, I mean, the, the weather, the ground, the, the moisture from the rain, that is definitely one thing. But I'm telling you, and anyone that's been out there and risking more of this stuff than I've done, that those conditions are as bad as they get. Once you got six feet down, it was fluid, it was bad, or like I said, our, we, every day we come to work, we write a check, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, we're getting our tails kicked on this thing. I, I mean, I understand where you guys are coming from, and I understand some frustrations, but I also know too, though, that as soon as a machine's broke down, I've seen this, you know, my whole life, I've been doing this since, you know, I'm second generation, so I've been doing it my whole life, you know, a machine break down, you don't haul in for that, you don't know how long it's gonna take, you have the tech come in, they order the part, I mean, this stuff takes a long time anymore, they don't stock this stuff, you know? But see, that's what guys remember though, you know, that's what we're, that's what we're remembering, but no one's remembering when we get the six inch rain and we're out there two days later trying to lay pipe in the slot because we're trying to keep, you know, we have a contract together, we're trying to do what we've, what we've agreed to do, but people don't remember that part, when we're out there working in conditions that have no sense in working, when there's two feet of water running through our pipe that's on top of the ground, you know, though, that's the stuff that guys forget about, but that's just how it goes, I mean, I've been doing this a long time. So, you know, like I said, I'm not asking for anything for a change of conditions, those guys that were laying that pipe that you're speaking of, I have no idea what they were digging in, there's no way it was worse, it's impossible for it to be worse, or even even comparable, I don't know who your engineer was on that, it was these guys.
That's my engineer.
So, you know, he could probably speak to that, I cannot, so.
Those are very different ground conditions. I'm torn here too, because I'm, I'm here as your representative, your engineer, but I, but I also know historically how these things work out, and, yeah, things you've mentioned like interest, that is damage expense, uh, extra time for us is expense, extra time for Trish. I'm not sure how the interest will work here because there's gonna be hardly any interest, uh, with the pay.
It would be if there was, they didn't front load or put the money in it.
Oh, yeah, it would be, yeah.
It's contingent too, when the Idells payment comes in.
Yes.
You know, for the sake of, you know, the landowners getting levied and, you know, paying for something that isn't completed, it should have been completed. I'll speak to your, you know, I was out there when they started, and, yeah, the conditions were not good, there's no two ways around that. But it took them the better part of a month to ask for a change order to not follow the same pathway as the old pipe, and which was immediately granted because everybody's reasonable with the conditions not being good. And then they kinda got, got squared away and got going on it, and it's already been brought up that once things kinda got going, asked for, okay, we're going to pull off the job, go someplace else, and then around that timeframe of a machine breaking down and all that, and then, you know, come back, and the extension was asked to December first, you know, like Rick mentioned. If you amend, have a contract and then amend the contract, but yet don't follow the contract, who, who's ever gonna be held accountable? Why do you have the contractors worthless then, if we don't enforce this?
Yes, I agree.
And we're very lenient, the landowners, I believe, are being exceedingly lenient, but practical and reasonable, cause they've been around and farmed for a long time, they understand what's going on with their program, uh, but it, it isn't correct, I mean, if this was nearer to completion, you know, anything, you mentioned the, the amount of distance yet, uh, yeah, we, nobody's disagreeing that it was tough conditions, but we have to hold your, you know, contracting company accountable for some tardiness in getting after this. Yeah, you, I know the conditions were bad, but you're gone, you didn't get after it, I was, like you said, out there at the get-go, yeah, absolutely, it was terrible. Why didn't they ask for that, I'm just going back to the start, why didn't they ask for that change order in a week? Why did it take them?
Well, I mean, cause it rained, I mean, every third, every three days it was raining, you just couldn't get it, you couldn't get anything going, you didn't know what you had, you know, I mean, just a, it rained every other day and then you're off a day and then you're back, you can't get into a rhythm. So, listen, I get, I get what you're saying, you know, I do, but if we're gonna go to full contract stuff, like you're saying, hold people accountable, then what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go and I'm gonna ask for unforeseen conditions, and I've got a really, really good, you know, really good stance on that, and it gets expensive, like, I would just say, the only person this project has cost right now, the only person has any skin in the game right now, is me. You know, I'm the only, it's cost me money every day we go, so, all this, you know, all this stuff you're saying, I mean, I get what you're saying, I do. I mean, I've sat in these conversations plenty of times, but you can't, you can't bid a job, a job like this, there's no way anybody knew that these, these conditions are gonna be like this. I have not once asked for any extra money, not once, we asked for some extra time, and not even for the conditions, it was for what was coming out of the sky, like I said, work wettest year on record. So, I mean, if we wanna start going down these paths, we can, but I'm, I don't think you're gonna like where it ends up.
Well, you did ask for extra money in the first change order to get away from the crushing place, as they call it, follow the old tile line.
Which, which I think, I mean, the, the change rate came on that was still stinking reasonable, I mean, it was, it was like free almost, you know? We're doing extra work there and it was as cheap as could be, I'm crushing that, moving over, doing those connections, you know, cheap, 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 never trying to get a little extra dime here or there, and I guess I would like to get some of that back. You know, if the, if the farmers and the landowners are willing to, you know, make a move on this, which I really, really appreciate, uh, I hope it works out for everybody. But, you know, to sit here and kinda, you know, and say, well, King's not taking their end of the deal, I don't know that, I don't think you're gonna like where that ends up, because I think we've done not only our end of the deal, but a lot more, a lot more.
Well, we don't see that.
I, and I can tell.
We do not see that.
No, cause.
And I, we, when I say we.
The other crew was there at seven in the morning, working, we drive by out here, it'd be nine o'clock and there's nothing going on.
We leave the shop at six o'clock, so I don't know how that'd be possible, it is an hour and a half drive up here, it's an hour and a half, we, we meet at six AM.
We're staying in town. That's how it was possible, the other crew was working.
Just make sure that I'm not imagining anything that I've said.
Well, I, I could show you all those records, but I can't believe that'd be the case, because, you know, like, did we?
Well, I don't, I've known Bruce a long time and, uh, his.
Well, I have numerous texts that I would send Rick and saying when I was driving by that there was no activity.
Did it rain again?
I, I don't know, I should have been logging.
I don't like getting into this tip for talent.
I don't either.
If you guys want our, if you guys want my records, my payroll records, I'd be happy to get that stuff out.
Let's just move forward.
We gotta come up with something that's.
Ground conditions were very different on the two jobs, uh, we've got pictures, um. That's where I'm torn here because.
Difference?
Sand, flowing sand, um, was, they kept hitting pocket after pocket after pocket on this job. Terrible to deal with, you ended up, you get the trench box in there, it starts even run under the trench box, some of it was so fluid, that's the difference. Uh, the other job wasn't as deep, the ground conditions, they hit very little sand, hardly any, and which was good, because we couldn't have done the flat, and plastic if we hit a lot of sand over there, so.
Typically, when we hit sand, we hear, have these requests for more rock, I haven't heard any of that, so.
Yes, they place more rock, it's, it's been on pay estimates.
Has it?
Trench stabilization, yes, yeah, it's been in on the pay estimates.
Okay.
Cause that's, and sometimes they can dig through the lens, it's still coming in on them, but then you get down to a hard bottom, and if you can get to a hard bottom, you don't need much for rock, it's where you need the stabilization underneath, where you need it desperately, so. Yeah, I, it was different ground conditions, I, I can't argue that.
But, yeah, it was different, but there, again, there was a timeframe, and things granted, that I don't feel, you know, you guys had to go finish something else up, we have the feeling we're gonna be back and they're gonna get after it, if you, you knew by that point in time that, going by Rick's assessment of the bad working conditions, nobody's denying that, that maybe you shouldn't have ran off.
Oh, no denying that, did you say that I should have to be compensated, duly compensated for the change in conditions?
No, but when you left and you knew that it was taking longer, maybe you shouldn't have left, or we shouldn't have let you. And you talked about, you know, a couple, three different crews, looked at it and said, you know, this is gonna take a little bit more manpower, whatever, expediency, and, you know, those, that timeframe that, that we're off of the site entirely and the guys that are out there sitting right. and the guys that are out there, sitting right here, would know more so than I've heard a month. That was as good of not raining to help the conditions as we had all year.
We were farming around that south piece, and nobody was around doing anything.
Was that when we were broke down, because we had?
Nope, we weren't broke down.
I'm sorry, I thought I was coming into, I had some more information here.
No, and like you said, we're not denying that, but, you know, how can we just say, yeah, it was tough conditions? And like I said, everyone's very reasonable, the landowners have been reasonable, we typically pride ourselves as a board being reasonable. But you're so far away from the completion of this, and I think you had more than enough opportunity, given working through things a little differently, maybe not done, but I would suspect a lot closer. I just cannot quite see it.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll look at it this way. I'd be willing to make a motion to amend the contract to start in the fall, after seed corn's out. You know how we feel right now. We're not at all happy about what went on this fall. I think if you come in, get the job done, in a timely fashion this fall, and, you know, we'll probably be a little more lenient on it. But, I mean, we're not gonna do away with this right now, this two hundred and fifty dollar a day calendar thing today. We're gonna keep that in place, and see how it turns out in the fall, and.
That's pretty open-ended, though, I mean, what are you looking at?
I know, I know it's open-ended, but you know what? If you come in this fall and yank our chain, we're gonna be really upset.
Well, this thing was bid, what, January twenty-third of last year? Is when this went to bid, wasn't it? I'm pretty sure that's when it was, it was January twenty-third of seventeen. So it's, it's went over a calendar year, and we're still at the halfway point.
Okay, well, remember this, to date, I've lost between sixty and seventy thousand dollars on this project, okay? So just remember this, I'm the only one in this room that this has cost a lot of money for. I have not asked for a penny. Just remember that. So when you're like, I'm yanking your chain, I don't get that, because I feel like I have been so fair to not ask for anything here. When we do, when we do move the line over, and, hey, these guys are working with me, I'm not gonna try to ding anybody, I mean, it's for a couple thousand bucks, you know? We got a lot of work in that, they went, ah, they'll help us out here. So, I guess, I just, it's frustrating for me, because I've got so much wrapped up in this thing, and it's gonna be a lot more. And then, and it's like people are thinking I'm trying to take advantage of the county here, and it's just, it's the opposite.
I don't, I don't feel you're taking advantage of us. I feel like we just got kinda moved to the back burner, and went and did a different job.
That's not the case at all.
Dave, what I'm hearing here, because I wasn't on the board at this time, but what I'm hearing is the biggest frustration, everybody's point is, you left to go do another job when the weather was good, and I've got farmers back here shaking their heads.
I don't have any trouble with a bit of innovation in that.
But that's what I'm hearing, I think that's, everybody is upset about, Dave, is that you, we feel that you abandoned the job to go finish some other job.
Rick, did you not tell us he went and worked on a sanitary sewer for another town?
Yes. But I don't know what you're, honestly, I don't know what you're talking about here, I really don't, I really don't. I'm gonna go, you know, I'm.
Well, you should, if you are in charge of your construction company.
Well, we're sorry, I mean, we're just frustrated.
Sandy kinda hit the nail on the head.
That's what I, I was.
She wasn't, we were.
But that's, I'm just trying, what I'm.
Dial.
Yes.
I've got honey in the project, so you're not telling me.
Yeah, I just.
Yes, he does, so does Harland, so does.
But you know what, but no one's got extra, can I talk?
Yes, sir.
You were gone October third, or you left around the third of October, it's like, working day. And you were gone another three days. And I, quite honestly, we're aware we are now, and there's nothing we can change about anything that's gone. And I understand you guys have a worry about holding contractors' feet to the fire. But all I'm interested in is this project being done correctly.
Perfect.
And from what I've seen, or what I've heard from Rick and Jordan say, your guys are doing an excellent job of laying pipes. Some of the connections have been a little questionable, but otherwise, all I care about is this thing gets done. I'd like to see you get in there and get it done soon as seed corn is out, and that's all I care. I know it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost you money, but this is a long-range project. And I just wanna see it done correctly. And you're doing a good job, I understand you gotta hold your feet to the fire a little bit, but, that's all I'm concerned about, is it getting done correctly. That's the bottom line, right there.
Harland?
Well, we've pretty well expressed our feelings. So let's get this figured out, and get it taken care of.
It's been a tough year for everything. Farming wasn't easy this year either, or this past year. But that's past, let's move on, and try and, when seed corn harvest comes out, be ready to go and get it done. Your work has been very good, I think, in laying the pile line, we appreciate that. Our feeling is, I'm retirement, so we're not doing this for ourselves, we're doing this for the next generation. And we're more concerned with a good job than anything else. So if you can get in, if you'll get in there, we'll say the middle of September, when the corn comes out, and get it done timely, which shouldn't be any more than sixty days, then I think we'll all be satisfied.
I think we just need to move forward on that, then. We just need your word that you will work on it, and, you know, as needed at that time.
Is it not, is it not a policy that your workers stay close to town?
It depends, it just depends. They get out of the shop here in the morning.
A lot of times, the other crew, they were daylight to dark, but they were staying local.
Yeah, I can't, I don't know.
That's why they were gone so quick.
I'd like to go back to your point, though, because everyone pretty well knows, and these gentlemen have grown seed corn for years, we're, mid-September is not out of.
It's possible, even if we get an early one, it's possible in August.
As far as seed corn goes?
Yeah.
Last year, they started in August.
Yeah, they started, I remember, it was early. Yeah, I remember, on the twenty-third of August, and I think we were done. Something was done, but, well, mine, I had the first field, and the last field. The last field was seventeenth of September, and they were, everybody in our group was done, so.
And you should know by the tackling time what you think the outcome would be, when it's gonna be coming out, right?
Yeah, we're more than happy to just save an idea, so he can be ready to go.
Okay.
And at least plan a little bit, calling you on the last day is not, not ardent whatsoever.
How long would it take to work?
How long would it take to get the job done, once you start the fall?
Hard to say, you know, hard to say. What we just talked about here was twenty-two days, if it goes just right, you know? That wasn't, that's not crazy, but it also, you know, it's gonna have to go a little better than it has, but it can't go worse, you know, it just can't. The groundwater cannot be higher, there cannot be more sand, I hope there's not more sand. But it does, the top of the ground, the pipe's going like this, the top of the ground's going like that. So, I mean, we do get to some shallower stuff here before too long, so our production rates should, you know, should pick up. So, I mean, just what we did there, I mean, that was two hundred a day, basically, wasn't it, you just said? So, I mean, if we did a hundred a day, it's two months, and we gotta be able to do that. And we couldn't in the beginning. Heck, there was a lot of days we did sixty feet, forty feet, eighty feet, you know? But I don't see it being like.
No, with this getting shallower, getting into a little bit different area.
Making your chain start on a date.
Yeah.
All right, I think we're all in agreement to move this till fall, when the field of the corn's out, if you come back in and get moving on it, get it completed, and we'll go from there.
One thing we do need is a little better communication, when we call over there and ask for information, it would be nice to give a return call.
At our office? Is there a talking phone?
The information flow coming in towards us hasn't been great.
Well, I know one thing we try to do so, and if you'd like it different, I'd be happy to change that, but, you know, we typically, and it's on, it's on purpose, we try to make most of that flow through the engineer, you know what I mean? We do that, it's a steady or the state or whoever. If you'd like a little bit different, I mean, with the situation.
That's fine, as long as someone who's involved in it gave the information, that's all we ask.
And the reason for that is just, so you have kind of, yeah, right, right.
That's fine.
Like Harland brings up a good point, don't underestimate this, and these guys are gonna be in touch with you. And you almost, we almost all know to date about when that's gonna be able to get back in there. And that gets back to your point of, you know, dicking around in the fall. I think everybody here is expecting that, because of the fact that they'll give you a pretty good lead time of getting in there and getting after it and getting it done. And we do, like you said, Dave, it would be apocalyptic if the conditions are worse for going.
What, are we, you have most of the bigger pipe there that?
Yeah, we have a lot of pipe.
All the big stuff?
I don't know.
I mean, I just, I meet the, the meeting.
We've got a lot of pipes in there.
I know you do, and that's what, I, I thought we had to be getting close to the end of the big stuff, and then from there, it starts tapering down, right?
Yeah, it's not that far till we get down to the thirty inch, I think it's.
About another fourteen hundred feet, you go down to thirty.
And then we're shallower, smaller pipe, everything points to better conditions.
Well, let's just hope for a better spring, better summer, and gets your corn growing, and we can put this behind everybody. That's my opinion.
So, Dave, do you think worst-case scenario, sixty days to get it completed, once you start it?
Yeah, I would say.
And what do you think?
I mean, that would be worst-case scenario, that would be awful.
Right, that's what I'm saying, what do you think best case, what do you think worst case?
Yeah, I think best case is about four and a half weeks.
Okay.
Okay, I would take it five months till the farm.
I got that motion for this.
Yeah, we wanna come back in.
I think you better keep to teeth in it.
We need a motion on that.
Continue it? Or how are you, what do you want for the wording?
How should we do this, Rick?
Well, I, I just.
Do you write up a new contract?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, a supplemental contract?
Uh, this is a first for me, so I don't.
Yeah, because we've never done anything like this before.
And it's rare, but we've done it in the past, it basically will.
How about, like, a continu-, would it be?
No, not a continuous, let's do a supplemental. Yeah. So, all right, the new contract's starting two weeks, or, let's put it tentative September first, and give him, give him till November fifteenth, that's seventy-five days roughly. Should be God's plenty of time.
Plenty of teeth, though.
Do we have, do you wanna put the location of where he's at now, when he starts?
I don't think, what do you mean by the location?
Well, where they're, where they're sitting in the middle of the field, they should have the hub out there, right?
From station so-and-so to stadium so-and-so.
So at least we know that it, when he started on whatever date it was you're starting, he started at that location.
Yes.
So what completion are you thinking, you said November, but what are you thinking of when in November, mid-November?
I expect November fifteenth, because.
Fifteenth, get it to Friday, get it to Friday. I was just wanting, so we can get it down the right.
And that's two months past from the time we, pretty sure he's gonna be.
Yeah, he's, yeah. Because I'm sure there'll be, I'll see going out by the fifteenth of September. It'd be really late, when it proceeds.
I would think so.
That'd be sixty days for sure.
I wanna tie it to the date that the corn comes off, or this is my notification.
So maybe you can get it earlier, even if you wanted to start earlier.
Yeah. Mid, you know.
Maybe we should have the starting date, the day after the seed corn is taken off, something like that. That way you could start.
With no grace for getting, leaving up where it is or anything?
Well, that's, I mean, that's your early start date, put it that way. So you ain't start, you know.
So I can't start before the corn's out?
Right.
Right.
Exactly, yes.
Well, they won't let you.
That's not that easy to deal with.
But I just kinda.
Then they might get angry.
Patient. We might have problems there. You might be dealing with my problem.
You gonna put that before the motion?
Yeah, I think that was my motion, yeah.
Can we read it?
Yes. Early start dates, the day after the corn has been removed, ending, ending completion by November fifteenth.
Why not just say seventy-five days after?
Or seventy-five, well.
Or sixty days, whatever you want to put on.
Let's make it November fifteenth, because that would, that would give them more time possibly.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Any other discussions?
So, Dave, obviously, yeah, like I said, nobody's saying it's been a tough deal, the conditions, so on and so forth. You said you haven't asked for any money, you don't expect to ask for any more, your thought process to get back in there after seed corn harvest and finish it up? As planned.
Yep. Per plan, per our semi-agreement here, if we finalize and we have to pay the workman, I'll sign it.
I mean, I think we're being extremely lenient. We don't like litigation any better than you do, but I think we have grounds if we wanted to go that route. We just want you to get it done. The landowners, we're taking a lot of consideration from their input as well. And we agree with them, because they're the ones that are paying for it, not us.
And the same quality that you had before.
Is there gonna be any final grading done, or what's done already?
I guess I don't, it's pretty snowy when I drove by here, but it'd be dozer finished, you know, and then.
John, you farm that, right?
Yeah, so that was the first stretch.
Yeah, the first stretch.
Okay. And I know there's a lot of work, we went back and did some extra, it was pretty, you know, when we first went through there, it was pretty nasty stuff, and had to sit around, or, you know.
You have a chance to settle winter, and.
Right, right, right.
Saw it settle, I think there needs to be some.
You think it'll be more than just drag a land, you know, a land leveler across there, or, you know, more than an implement?
He's not gonna have much for any type of equipment that's gonna put it like field colligator. I mean, everything he has is.
It's gotta be left, so we can get in there with.
I understand, but I'm just saying, what they have, they don't.
Because the way it is now, from what it was left, there's no way that I can go in there with a field colligator to level.
And there's water sitting there now that has no settling spots. You're gonna have some of that, you're gonna have some of that. I don't know what's, what degree you're speaking, but that's always the case, you get in there, you pack the ground a little bit, and, you know, farm it, and just take.
Well, it's always been that draw through that support ran through, and now you've got two-foot elevation in there of dirt over the trench.
And may not be by now. And when the frost goes out, that might change, but.
It will settle.
You know.
Wait and see what it looks like.
We'll have to see where we're at, you know, and see what happens when the frost goes out and that. It always looks a little bit different, for sure, sometimes better, sometimes worse, you know, so.
Well, are you asking, John, are you willing to go back in there if need be?
I think I would, these guys, that I would, so.
Perfect.
If I have to haul a dozer up here for half a day or something, I mean, you know, that's a part of my contract.
So we appreciate that, because there's no way I would take a field colligator out there now. I mean, it's just, you've carried all that out.
Yeah, well.
It's gonna be a while till I can.
I wish.
Of course, you were planting corn in forty days, right?
But it happened.
Somebody told me last week.
But it happened.
Oh, yeah, I had lunch with my neighbor, it was on Thursday last week, he said, help me plant corn in forty days, believe it or not. And yeah, we'll see about that.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Pose, carry. Okay.
Thanks, Dave, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thanks, John. You keep, let us know if there's any issue with the dozer thing.
Okay, I will.
Just so you pretty much already know this, that this isn't overly agreeable, it's just reasonable. And if it wasn't for the landowner's concession, I mean, shit, if we did have to go to court.
They've been very decent, I think the landowners have been very, very, very understanding.
This is another learning experience.
As I say, every damn project we do is learning experience.
Well, I'll come, the last one, there's only one thing.
That one, we didn't learn anything off of there, except plastic worked pretty well.
It all worked.
Yeah.
And we already knew we had to disconvene the landowner, so we really didn't learn anything on that. We already knew it going in, so, this is unacceptable, though.
Oh, yeah.
And it's just unacceptable.
Very different conditions.
They're not, yeah.
Half the depth, not much sand.
I just don't think that covers the whole thing.
There you go, there you go.
Yeah, I said, I admitted that, that it wasn't the greatest conditions, but that doesn't cover everything.
Right, right, yes, I agree, absolutely agree with you there.
You go?
No.
Sold up.
Yeah.
My.
Bad back.
Get a bad back, you know?
I was shoveling too much snow stuff, oh my, and then I went at church and helped there, too. So, then I was carrying fifty-pound bags in the closet at church, oh geez.
I don't know.
So that was stupid. But, you know, sometimes.
And doing a good job of following that.
I agree with your mind, because it's a terrible place, you're gonna do it. I agree with your mind, 'cause it's a terrible place you're gonna go.
So I'm like, no, obviously.
But I'm going by your statement. What's the chance of them dicking around, getting there?
Well, that's why we're getting new contracts, we still have the old contract.
Yeah.
You mentioned that, I'm not making this up, and I knew what you were saying.
What else you got for us, Rick?
Okay.
'Cause I don't, I'm a smart son of a bitch.
Up till that date, till today.
We got one oh three and four million, you know, and that, so.
We don't have any of our buddies here from there.
This is, this one deals with the, uh, crop damage on heat sub-five of DD eleven. I'm not putting numbers on it, I don't wanna put numbers on it, we came up with area. But I'm not an expert, and I've told the landowner this, on how does the compaction actually affect it? Does one wheel track do a lot? I don't think so, especially after going through a.
Can I throw something out at the start of this? This is Carmen's concern?
Yes.
We don't have anything to do with this.
I agree, but.
We, I'm glad that you let us know, have you been in contact with our Gurkey, uh, people?
Yes, yes, yes.
They're, you know, outside of the set easement, which we already have, that's a known quantity.
Right.
Uh, all this other stuff, I mean, thanks, like you said, how do you know? I, it's a tough deal.
I told Carmen Jansen.
And when you look at a track, which, which one was made by the, the grain cart, which one was made by a truck?
Was it one truck, two, three?
Probably fifteen, twenty, 'cause they, they brought in stacks of gravel often. The letter just points out that we authorize using along the road, because it just would not work to put a field drive down low where the tile was, so, um, we're saying that the district's gonna pay some loss along the road, not yet.
Right, but that was agreed upon.
That was in the field, agreed between us and the, and the contractor, that that was the only practical way to get everything in there. We did not approve just coming back across field anywhere they wanted.
Right.
Yeah, and Steve Gurkey has said, I know I've got a problem here, I know I didn't approach this properly, I know I have some money in this, um, he would like Carmen to come back with a, a bill, or whatever, whatever you wanna call it.
Gestment.
Yeah, an estimate of damage.
And I think she's gonna just sit, she wants to see what they offer her before, that's my opinion.
Yeah, could come to that. I just point out that they have the right of ingress and egress, but they'll have to pay for that, whatever loss there is along the road, because that's not part of the official easement, it is the.
So the official, obviously, is the tile line, and then there was an agreement here?
Along the road.
Just verbal agreement between us and the contractor that this was the only feasible way to.
Along the, from, we're, point that out, Rick, from, along, when you say along the road.
Is Carmen aware of that easement?
I have told her that there's, there's some along this north fence, um.
So they had to go in.
A driveway up.
Yeah, often we would construct a driveway down here.
Right.
But it'd be so steep, it'd be out in the field, they'd have to add a pipe, it was just way more practical. There's a field entrance right here at the top of the hill.
Yep.
So instead of trying to get down into the field here, we said, come up here, use this entrance, come down here, dump the rock or the pipe, whichever you're hauling, get turned around, come back, and come back out.
Right, so this was part of the construction easement?
Yes, yes, based on a field decision on conditions and what it would take to do a driveway.
Yeah, well, there's no, I mean.
My, my question, Rick, was Carmen aware of that easement at the time we talked to the contractor?
I don't know.
Okay, I was just a question.
I don't know, um.
And roll, what just down through there?
No, that's piles of dirt, actually.
It's odd how it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Or dirt or rock, because they piled the rock along there as they went too, so.
Every, it wasn't very far between rock pile and dirt.
So this, obviously easement, and then coming in this drive, going down here, that's part of the damages per the drainage district?
Yes, correct, and the area along the road is this one point, what does that say?
Four.
So that's just gonna be factored in just like this?
Yes, not as severe.
Not just a bit of one year.
Because we don't pile dirt on it or anything, we don't disturb it.
Right, but it's still, that's gonna be, you're factoring any of damages.
Yes.
And that, fine, that's the only thing we have to do with. All this crisscross stuff, that, like Rick says, was it the grain cart, was it one truckload, was it ten truckloads?
And were there empty truckloads?
Well, besides the fact that.
I mean, if I was a trucker, I would've took the path everybody else, I mean, maybe drove back empty that way, but.
Especially in the weather.
Who knows, we don't know.
I mean, as wet as it was, you sure shit wouldn't go striking out across new land with a load of rock.
No, I don't wanna get.
Unless you wanted to get stock, right, Bruce?
Well, I'd, been out in the field.
But contractors aware, it's put you in no better or worse spot than you've been in some of the stuff to come up with a quantitative.
Yeah, we did the quantities, because it wouldn't, it just didn't take that much.
We can't go, we can't, we can only go on the easement, remember, we got a letter.
That's right.
Which we have no business to go out there, and no one would, in their right mind, would want to.
Well, and, and I, the contractor and Carmen, I've talked to them separately, they, they both at least would like to be able to come up with a number that they can just settle it, and I said, well, that's absolutely where everybody else stands on the thing too.
Yeah.
It's yours to deal with, settle it, one way or another.
Bingo.
So.
That's, that, you know, that's just, that's it, right there.
Yeah.
I do have something on damages though, so this is something that would come back to us, to the drainage district. Remember back in the beginning of this, with the silage chopping?
Mm-hmm, oh, something about silage chopping, yeah, they cut silage.
Cut, cut silage, kind of in and around the beginning of the project, I think on either side of the road, to clear off the corn. Okay, that, if they have a quantitative, you know, acre amount, doesn't that go back then as damages? We're figuring damages on the drainage district?
Yes.
That they remove this crop, they get a, whatever, compensation.
And, and we've decided just to stick with the corn, whether it was something else or not, and just have that as a basis for payment, where we do the two hundred and twenty-five buts, buts per acre.
If they took five acres, then it was, you got a calculation on that.
Yes, yes. We raised the corn price to three seventy-five, based on what the commissioners and craters said, um, yeah.
So that, but that's a, a district thing, just that's a damage part in the district.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because, this'll refresh your memory, the guy that went in there and chopped the silage, said basically, I'm not giving you anything for this. I'm getting it out of your way, because if I give you anything for this, and you get damages, you're double dipping.
Double dipping.
He said, I, you know, I can't, and plus, it was so far away, he was doing it, you know, just to do it. He didn't really care one way or the other.
Makes the project nicer for the people working when the, when the covers gone.
Yeah, but just so in case you don't al- already know this, which you probably do, then of course, she's ticked off about that too.
Yeah.
But.
But the flip side of it, being cut, the silage, it was gone.
Oh, it made it.
You go in there with a, um.
Roller and flatten it out.
Then you got nothing but a.
All that fresh juice comes out of the, the corn, and then it's a mess.
It is a mess.
Takes days, and even when you move it over, it's still wet.
Yeah, it's like, it's just a hell of a mess.
Yeah, it's way better if we can get the crop out of there.
So, but there again, just, I know you're aware, but, but that's, 'cause I had a tenant call, so far, he's still a tenant. What about that, I said, that, that would be damages, you have a known quantity, uh, but that was, just to refresh everybody's memory, you know, she didn't pay to have it, didn't pay for chopping it.
Nope.
Didn't, he didn't pay for getting, it was a wash.
Right, right.
So it was to get rid of it, so it's gotta come back on the compensation, if you will, the damage part of it.
Yes.
And that's a district thing.
Yes.
So that's not really, shouldn't be that big of a.
Shouldn't be a big deal, I don't think.
No, that's pretty.
Shouldn't be, but it can be.
Well, just, and I said, she's not happy about that, she's not happy about this, like Bruce said, the, this is just here, I, maybe I shouldn't even say it, but that silage chopping and the, yeah, went across the field at an angle, it did expedite the project. But then she doesn't care about that.
No.
So.
Okay.
Now what?
Good stuff.
Anything else? Um, well, just to, to kinda just quickly go over my letter, um, and then you, you all saw the letter to the Carmen Road, as far as staying off the property.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, okay, um, I don't think he hit it on the agenda to talk about the DD thirty-five outlet, but I've talked to the forester again, and he hasn't made a trip over here. He, he, how he explained it to me was, he has projects that cover his salary, this doesn't, isn't one of them, but he's willing to look at it with us when he's over here for something else.
Wonderful.
So, uh, he mentioned the possibility of using conservation person, local county conservation person, as a reference too, perhaps. I don't know what their expertise is in tree and things, but.
Oh, yeah.
Should be Todd.
Todd, yeah.
Oh, he has a lot.
Todd does a good job of cutting them down and cleaning them off.
Yes, he does, yes, he does.
He do a nice job on the trail system.
Yeah, and they'd get after some of those trees.
So the forester promised me he'd call when he was, had something coming through.
Well, that was nice of him, good to view his check on it, but I, I think, you know, there again, I got a bad feeling on this, that we're, we're not really making a mountain out of a molehill, we're trying to do it correctly to get easements, where technically, we could just go in there and clean up what needs to be cleaned up, and nobody could say a thing of it, 'cause it's an outlet for an existing ditch.
Well, I think that right now is our best time with Rick Peterson was the one that said that if we knew what he wanted, he'd go in there and start ripping it out.
Yeah, that's, we're gonna have him in on the meeting with the forester.
But the next thing we know, it's gonna be spring, and he's gonna say, well, rather than go piss with this Teresa deal, I'm gonna go do a clean out, or I'm gonna go put some pipe in and make money.
Oh, I know, you're right, this is the opportune time to be in there, so.
So maybe we should ask Todd if, if this is the best time to do it, ask Todd if he feels comfortable going through there and seeing what's.
It's a good point, we'd walk with him, and we'd, we'd get Rick Peterson in here.
Well, I've walked it once, I'm not gonna walk.
He's done, that's, that's okay, Bruce.
Knee deep, I guarantee it's knee deep, 'cause the deer quit running through there, that's how deep it is.
Oh, my god.
Might be deeper than that.
Yeah.
That's fine, but I just have a bad feeling this is gonna drag on for another, who knows?
Twelve years.
Yeah, maybe not twelve, but I'd, I'd go as far as say a couple, before anything gets done.
Well, sooner we can keep it on the front burner again, the better we are, so.
If Todd would be so good as to get in and take a look, and if Rick Peterson is of a mind to get in and get something done.
County Kay, Rick.
County Kay, yeah, you're not, you don't, no, you don't have to go out there, you don't have to go out there. County Kay, Rick.
Yeah.
It'd be, I'll, I think we'd be all for it, and the district would be all for it.
Hey, back to our deal with Mr. King.
Yeah.
When this does start, we need to have a log of, it started on September eleventh.
Absolutely.
And twelve, it was rainy, thirteenth, it was sun, 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 sun.
Yeah.
And I know hindsight's twenty-twenty, but we can't, we can't say, well, I should, I'll, I'll bring my stuff. We have to know.
Yes.
And I don't care if that means Dial or whoever, we just, I talked to him earlier and said, you know what, just put a sun on the, it was, you know, sunny day, or they weren't here raining, just so we have a, 'cause when we get down the road, I didn't always get up by there, but the days that it is, I knew that they weren't there.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
We get in a, some match with somebody like this, we need to know damn good and well that this is our record.
Do you think, it's your thought process, that we just made a different contract to get this completed? That we didn't null and void the old one?
No.
So we could still go back with damages?
Oh, yeah, you still have that available.
This isn't one I didn't care for, but I know, I wanna get it done.
I wanna change the existing one.
Just to make sure that, 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 that's some teeth, because, like we all have the concern, and I know that Dial and or Harland or all those guys are gonna let them know as soon as they know.
Yeah.
On whatever date that is, that it is in October, Bruce, it is in October fifteenth when they're there, and it's, it's doable the tenth of September.
Right, right.
We have, I mean.
What do we got here, DD one oh three?
Yeah. Well, nobody's here.
Yeah.
Well, one guy's in Florida, or no, Arizona, right, Arizona.
Well, this was just basically some preliminary.
Formal meeting.
Did you look at that?
I mean, I haven't been out there or anything, obviously, um, I mean, we have maps of the area, I have the old file where, um, wasn't Bill Mansky, his brother, did some tile replacement.
The last part of, towards the last, towards town.
Yeah, yeah, so it's just a matter of, my understanding was you were just basically gonna work with a contractor and try and figure out the limits and replace, where's that? And it was just kinda talked through with the landowners.
Right, there's a cons, yeah, concern on that, this little drainage district encompasses a lot of the town above. So some of these, and this one we just hashed over, you get the majority of the landowners, but, and you could still do that, nobody showed up here today, but as far as them coming to an agreement like, well, you know, it wouldn't hurt our feelings, what, what can we spend up to without a bid?
Fifty thousand.
Okay, or they said, you know what, we can understand, we know this area, which they all do, it's, you get in tough shape, you know, in or around thirty thousand, you know, to, to do some repairs, 'cause my repairs are work orders, but nobody's here, I think that's kinda what we're looking at. It's just they know that, I don't think they want a petition as a put in a whole new system, they just want more of it fixed than the holes that keep showing up and the tile that keeps breaking. Does that make sense? But we're, you know.
There's a portion between the railroad tracks and the outlet, and then there's also a portion between where it ended with Mansky to the railroad track, I believe, right?
And they're. Looking at?
Yeah, well, I can tell you this much.
So we need to decide which portion you wanna address first.
This is just the common sense thing, right now, there's a work order for a broken tile on the south side of the railroad tracks, which would be, as Trish said.
Should be the, not, not the ditch side, uh.
Yeah, other, way further away on the other side, the, the south side of the railroad track.
Yeah, yeah, here's the railroad tracks, and it's part of the.
But right here, and Mansky did what, somewhere?
On the south side, two.
Over in, over here? I, you know, approximately?
This is the general area.
I think, oh, right in here is where they ended.
Right over in this general area? 'Cause it wasn't a lot of footage, I don't think.
Only eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
I think they ended at, um, the intake.
But I think they did, what were thought processes, they replaced, they think they installed an intake and replaced some of the tile. There's a hole, there's a broken tile, but not, it's not up against the track, so it's just out in the field there, right now.
They ran plastic.
They did four hundred and thirty feet and placed an intake.
Yes, I thought, four hundred and thirty feet of plastic, it's amazing, I was.
So right now.
Let's hope and pray it's away from the railroad, so we don't.
Well, and it, and it works fine under the road, as we speak, whatever size that is.
Wonderful.
Um, so there's a broken tile right here, uh, so when they go out to fix it, hopefully in the spring, of course.
Oh, my god.
What's wrong, we gotta dig that tile up anyway, doing kind of an inspection, you know, they can dig back a little more than just, which they would anyway.
Yeah.
Make a determination, uh, if you could, if we could get a location as far as where that previous one was fixed, where it ended, which I'm afraid is further this way than what you think, 'cause I, I mean, this is just thrown out an, an option, you know, fix, start here, go back to, with any tiles.
Put new plastic there.
Up to it, right there.
I think that this, I don't know if this is a property line where they put the intake on?
Yes, that's this, probably right here, is probably what you're looking at.
Donnie Wagner's.
It's on the south side though, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I hear you.
Excuse me, uh, here, 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 here. Just, I'm guessing that intake is right here.
I'm guessing so too.
So, yeah, I don't know how far this is, but if the tile's here, and they only came a little ways here, you know, it's still a pretty good.
Pretty good stretch.
Pretty good run, and it makes a curve beside. Just an option, if they expose the tile and determine, yeah, this is complete junk.
Which it will be.
It might be good, because that's why it keeps breaking.
Yeah.
How big was it, Rick?
Um, eighteen inch.
Eighteen inch, so it stays eighteen inch.
Yeah.
So, if it's eighteen inch, you know, and I'm pretty sure we could get some consensus between now and when this could be fixed. Do you just go here and then just get up to where it's new again? That'll alleviate that chunk anyway.
Yeah.
And that was kinda, I was out there with Donnie Wagner, and that was kind of their thought process, instead of just fixing where it keeps breaking, try to make a little bit of an, not really improvement, because.
Say that word?
No.
Repair by replacement.
Repair by replacement of the tile that's there, which is.
Here's what was said at the meeting, the work could require some charges to be assessed to the city of Bowdoin homeowners, as about half the town is part of the district, agreed to have an informal hearing for the affected parties. So you were just trying to inform them that this is coming up, and you're gonna be doing some work out there, and to talk about it, and I think, yeah.
There are issues within the town also, and I've had a couple calls on that, from landowners.
But is that our concern?
Well, they don't wanna pay for anything.
Part of it is, because it goes right through part of town, goes all this way to the west.
Not draining.
Really?
See, that, that was why I thought we needed to have this informal hearing, because if they're having issues in town, maybe we should do a whole new project, get it deeper, bigger, so they do have.
The town can't, the town can't afford it.
Well, nobody can.
To fix it and reassess it to their, what they've got going on right now, and.
Yeah, because the town would get a nasty bill, and the landowners in town would get a nasty bill.
And then they'll all be here.
They're kinda bad at Gilmore City.
Where this little district lies, there, even some of the land, landowners away from town may not be overly agreeable to a huge bill, they're overagreable to a small bill, and that was kind of the.
But the thing is, are we fixing something that doesn't work?
No, it works.
Sort of works.
It keeps breaking.
But is that, is that a problem, or is it, is it gotten too small over the years? That's why people tell them now it doesn't work, because it gets overloaded.
I think it's. In town, it's not working, I don't know if it's broke or just.
Or is it overloaded?
See, that's the problem, it's undersized, so we're fixing an undersized pipe, so when we gotta fix it, it's still undersized.
And it's still gonna break down in both.
But, yeah, it's still the problems in town.
But, nobody quite knows, being that it's, the whole thing is old, we know it's broke here, and it's broke, and it's broke several times in this area, like Trish said, we don't know, maybe it's broke closer to town, too, that's why it's not working.
Yeah.
But no one's called with an location on that, like.
Not really, no, not as far as broke, just saying it does not work, and they just had trouble with letting.
So, would it be similar to what we did in Bradgate, and would we be better off to go up into town and dig it up a couple places, and see what the flow is on it, and find it?
Be worth the investigation if you can, yeah, if you do that.
Because I mean, if you're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars and you don't improve.
Yeah.
The quality.
What good is that?
Yeah.
It's just thirty thousand dollars to be just thrown away.
Well, you've done it for the simple fact that you improved, you didn't improve it, you made it work better on the bottom side where, but if it's still above.
It's still too small, it's still too small.
It's still too small. Looks like the upper ends of it's twelve inch.
Going in, going into town.
I guess my suggestion would be getting with the city and finding out what they have.
See what they know.
What they're, what they're.
With their system, crossing into our system, and I've had reports that there's actually one place where the city came in and crushed some tile into somebody's backyard, and I don't know if that's the city, or if that's.
So could we have you send a letter or email to them and just say, hey, we had an informal hearing, which we were the only ones present, um, we're still trying to investigate this, do you have any information to throw to us? That, have, is any complaints, what is going on in, in town?
So we can make a good decision, because we can't really make a decision till we know.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen, I don't think we should.
Well, the gist of it was, they didn't feel a complete improvement project would fly, and they're, but they're looking for a little bit more extensive repair. Is that a fair way to say it?
That's, that's the, the landowners up in the, the farms.
So they're not really, there really hasn't been a complaint of the lack of drainage, just too many times it's been breaking.
But what, what, what I'm saying is, okay, we're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars, why, maybe we should start at the bottom end and lay thirty thousand dollars worth of larger pipe.
And take the pressure off of the upper.
Take the pressure off the other. You know, that's a thought, but then it's an improvement, which it, but it's still the same amount of money.
Right. Now, you're pretty much correct with your statement, except that in a case like this where it includes a lot of a town, it's hard to get enough objection officially to stop the project. And I've never run something like this through, because they have to get seventy-five, they have to get fifty percent of the landowners opposed, and they have to own seventy-five percent of the land.
They don't own seventy-five percent of the land.
If everybody in town officially objected, it wouldn't stop it.
But there was another concern, like I said, a landowner on the southern edge of the district may be very objectionable and might be able to stop it.
But he doesn't have the fifty percent of the landowners, though.
Well, I, you know, I don't know, I didn't sit and, you know, look at, this is coming from.
I mean, you know what I mean, he doesn't meet the landowner's criteria on the.
He wouldn't have as big a, but, wouldn't be probably favorable.
Right.
But then again, I'm getting from Donnie Wagner, who's directly affected, because that is his ground, uh, they're really not looking for an improvement. They're not looking for a big project, so, and, you know, I'm not gonna speak for him, because nobody's here, but that was the, the impression that I got.
The problem you're facing is, if they file for a repair, and it shows the repair is necessary, you, you should do it. But you need to get the other information from Bowdoin to see if there's a better way to spend that money.
That's, that's what I look at, a better way to spend, it'd be different to go out and fix twelve feet of tile.
Yeah.
But spending thirty thousand dollars is a huge repair.
Yeah.
Right.
Here we did four hundred and some that was eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand, right.
Was this, it goes up near the elevator?
Yes.
I mean, there's.
They did some work at the elevator when they knew, put a new scale pit in years ago, rerouted the tile around with scale pit and things. So, at that point, they knew where it was, but now it's, it's all under concrete and.
Might wanna, yeah, find out if there's just a problem near.
I really don't wanna make that decision, well, I thought the city of Bowdoin's sitting here, and people in Bowdoin well aware of it.
I agree.
Good point.
Because, I've been down that road, it's not fun.
So, then should we have her at least touch base with the clerk?
Well, like I say, these are deals, you have one farmer that's managing, you go, get into town, you have three hundred and fifty-five.
They're all mad at her, you gotta, we had the whole.
Well, at least you're more of one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we remember.
Mm-hmm.
And they're still pissed that we, they think we took from them.
Yeah, that feeling won't go away.
Or is it best to have you request tile, city tile?
Tile maps or. Was it, I wonder if they have a clerk that's there, probably part-time.
Yeah, she's part-time, Becky Struthers, yeah, she's part-time.
Let me make a call, that one, if you can, see what they might have for records.
I'm just thinking, if there's maps that we could at least compare, and maybe these problems aren't even related to the county tile?
Yeah, maybe not.
I mean, because I don't think Becky Struthers goes.
Yeah, if they have a concern, they need to figure out what their concern is.
And if they don't have a concern, we can just go address the field issues and take care of them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, which will, well, you know, or.
You know, because that's what makes people mad, is, well, you know, I just, just jacked me a five hundred dollar assessment, and I got no benefit.
Right.
And truly, I mean, they're still having an issue in town, apparently, and if we just fix one thing, then that would be that, leave the.
We really don't know what their town issue is, maybe they broke a tile in town, well, and that's their issue.
It could be.
It could be. I'll give her a call, won't cost anything to give her a call.
Okay.
So, we're looking at it, right now, I mean, obviously, you know, farmers are, there's a hole in my field, I want it fixed this spring before planting.
Yep.
Uh, the contractor's out there, we can request, give us a, a, an assessment of when you dig that tile up. They could just go out and fix the tile and walk away, I mean, this isn't something that, as far as spending whatever money, has gotta be done, and will never get done probably by spring anyway.
No.
But.
So they can fix the hole and then give a look at it.
Yep. Well, and I did, just so you know, I'm talking with this landowner, who has land on this site as well, which you mentioned, does it make, obviously, you gotta fix the, the problem, or you fix the, the broken tile, but like you said, Rick, does it make more sense to come to an agreement? Do you maybe start at the drainage ditch and go to the railroad? There's one chunk done, then, you know, do it in increments, I mean, like to get some feedback from the people in the district.
Right.
Is what, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah.
Then, then actually accomplish something, but, let me ask you this, if somehow that's somewhat agreeable, is that, makes sense to do it?
Oh, yeah.
Instead of an entire, instead of a entire project improvement, does it make sense to do it in increments?
Because if you brought a bigger main up, that would relieve the pressure on the town so that it flowed better.
Yeah.
You wouldn't even have to take it all the way into town, possibly.
Right.
Any downstream things you can do are gonna help.
But we don't know for sure that that's really the problem with the town, they might have crushed one of the tile.
It could be, it could be, it could be a line that's just clear full of rust.
Absolutely possible.
It's not even getting there.
Yeah.
Well, if we brought an eighteen inch tile from the Bowdoin one sixty-nine corner, would that help?
There you go.
That'll work.
Yeah.
Are you gonna put that in a mow?
No.
It really defined, nobody showed up, because I have, we, no one guy is gone, and another person in that area was gonna be here for the discussion.
What else you got?
Obviously, nobody showed up.
I think that's it.
What do you got?
Me?
None.
No.
Well, what's this one here, if you can?
Which one?
One Webster.
Probably that joint, railroad.
Railroad over the top.
Damn, these are shamed, this is great.
I don't want one.
Get your checkbook out.
I don't think I could cover that today.
Um, I have bills for those, that's the.
You got bills?
Yeah.
But you do have something, you don't have nothing.
Well, pretty much. What's that bill? Bills, 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 I think I doled them out, maybe Sandy had those.
That comes in the illusion out in my area, all the tiles are pretty good shapes, I don't have any.
And that's for, uh, engineering and, uh.
These other areas are the kind of.
Was there a camera search on it?
I don't have, I don't, I don't have a sign.
Just said.
Oh, that's all.
I don't think it was a big problem that they participated.
I'm gonna conclude that all the tiles in my area are in bad shape.
I don't know what the deal is, because, yeah, there's not a whole lot.
That's good.
It's not that way, other than the open ditches, who cleaned them, a little bit, do a little fixing.
But, otherwise, interesting.
But I think, I don't know, I mean, that's kind of what the, this little district was requesting to kind of look into this and have this discussion, and getting that one done.
Are we, what is gonna be, uh, on our plate in the next, you know, I know we have.
Looks like banana bars.
This next deal, if we can get Kings to put that to the rest, then we're kind of in a lull, are we?
Drainage wise, you are somewhat.
Well, I know.
That'd be great, wouldn't it?
It would be, it would let her catch up some.
Catch up, take a little vacation.
Are we, I guess I'm, I'm just, we are not soliciting.
Well.
Have we had any interest in, from other people that?
On my job? Uh, I don't know. We've got DD ten ditch cleanout.
Yep, we're gonna be putting something together for that.
Which is Kenny Nielsen requested.
That's over east.
Is it ten? No, that's six, isn't it?
That, yeah, six, there is something on ten.
There's also ten.
Yep.
Which is Pat Hill and.
Is that the spot on, or is that potential clean clean?
Potential clean clean, yeah.
Clean clean, huh?
Not very big.
Well, excuse me, I was reading something here, what, ten, which one's this?
Ten is with Pat Hill and Brent Keenan and.
Oh, that little chunk out here.
Not very long, yeah.
No, it's, yeah, short.
And.
And it is kind of nasty.
Yeah.
We're still working on DD eighteen, the FEMA.
CD outlet.
Cleanout, and the outlet thing, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe, we can go and do something with that. Agwell closure stuff, so.
Have you heard anything from our lady that?
No, I emailed her last week again, and she said she had just talked to, was it a senator regarding that? And that she would get back to me again.
She needs to be talking to Idells.
Because she's actually.
She act like a lobbyist?
Yeah, she's.
She's a lobbyist for the contractors, probably.
Well, I just don't wanna be setting up against the deadline and we're still.
Well, we're getting them.
I know. And we're.
I got a question for you, what'd you do?
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, some of them, some expired, some are.
We don't know each individual.
We're just gathering their stuff together for the information of what was done before.
What you do have, so, you know, I'm not accusing you of not, just, just the.
It's not much money, because it was just pulling stuff together and, and checking the records for what was done, and things like that, just very, very minor.
Are we, are we doing anything with the, uh, private closure over there, or?
Yes.
That's moving forward?
It's, it's in a good spot, uh, I put in a call for the engineer last week, and I'm guessing he was on vacation, I didn't hear anything back, but, uh, yeah, we definitely gotta see where that is by spring, I mean, it's not really scheduled for anything, as far as getting the project would be fall, but everybody was in agreement, uh, here, whatever.
Paperwork, as long as the paperwork.
Well, he's been, yeah, it's moving the right direction, because Idells and, uh, lawyer, and everything is in a good spot, but it just, that's why I called. I said, okay, are we at that, oh, yeah, the good spot, so that they can get this done by fall. There's a couple other things that were thrown out and brought up to check into on the outlet part of it, uh, but, yeah, it's looking, I mean, it's looking more favorable in the wetlands creation, I'll guarantee you that much.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, anything else?
What?
I do, are you working on that Agwell closure?
Yeah, we're working on it, there's some field work we weren't able to get, we couldn't get on the ground, um, yeah, I mean, we're.
With that, I did have a landowner that, who is at DD forty-five, that's right above it.
Okay.
A mile away from the highway, they wondered if they could access that, they're partly in it anyway, if they could be annexed into.
It's very possible, I mean.
That would.
I don't know that we're gonna end up with a tile going that way, but they could, if they have some land.
I think so.
In the watershed.
That'll drain that way, it'll be part of it.
Yeah.
That darn lidar shows them that they're in, they're in.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're partially in it.
Okay, that would definitely give them a ride.
If they tiled into it, they would be more in it, but I don't know how else it's gonna work, they were just questioning that.
Sure. And we're finding, we've been up all of the tile lines with the locator from the Agwells, and turns out that it's gonna be very hard to have any of those tiled daylight into a wetland, very difficult, if not impossible on some of them. So, our report's gonna include a summary like that, one of the landowners told me a few weeks ago, and wondered about the possibility of taking some of it, at least an overflow to the southeast, and I said, that's part of what we'll look at. If our East Agwell, Aggrange Wells, at least, it looks like we should maybe be able to take it to the southeast, because it'd be low flow, so it would not have much effect on the rest of the districts.
Okay.
And you're doing that and getting this information when compiled to Idells, because it's their deal.
Yes. Their deal.
I'm gonna make a motion, go to the jury.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we're all agreeing.
I make a motion for adjourned.
Really?
Oh, we're done with everything, aren't we?
Yep.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Keep on top of them.
Oh, yeah, definitely. We'll get something put together for the contract.
Twenty-two, I got, Trish.